At this honor about 7:30 PM, we do have a quorum with all city council members. They're back from vacation. Should I do my line again? They're canned, they're fit, they're ready to spend your money. Yes, we're back from break.
We can save money, too.
You can. First item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular session held July 18th and the special session held July 25th, 2011?
Aye, senor. I'm second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been accepted. Under communications, I have several things. At this time, council has been in possession of the SPEZA annexation for over 60 days. So if council wishes to act upon it, they can. We have two liquor permits before us. One, a place I used to spend more than enough time in, the Union, at 18 West Union, is now going to be the Union Bar and Grill. It seems to be keeping the exact same permit that they had before. And the other is a new permit for CJ James, Inc., doing business as Athens Save-A-Lot. And that will allow them to sell, I think, wine and some packaged beverage, mixed beverages. So those are in council's office if anyone wishes to review or to request that council make a, ask for a hearing. The other things that we have before us, the National League of Cities is having its convention November 12th, Saturday, that's their business meeting. Normally, we appoint the law director to attend and be our voting delegate. Do I have such a motion?
Senor, you can move to appoint the law director or delegate.
Second. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have an appointment, sir.
Fantastic.
Now, the one that I am going to take some great joy and delight in reading. No?
Aye.
This is a nice one. This is a letter from Roderick J. McDavis, president of Ohio University, to Deborah L. Walker, Athens City Council. Dear Clerk Walker, the purpose of my letter is to respond to Athens City Council Resolution R-0511. This resolution urged Ohio University to contribute $50,000 per year for five years to the city of Athens for the exclusive use of payment on a new fire ladder truck. Ohio University will make this financial commitment to the city of Athens as part of a more comprehensive, formalized memorandum of understanding. The MOU will address the financial commitment for the purpose of a fire ladder truck in a broader context that codifies multiple other collaborations between the city of Athens and Ohio University. Mayor Wile and I have agreed to form a combined work group that will develop the MOU. I will appoint Ohio University representatives to work, to the work group, and Mayor Wile will appoint city of Athens representatives. We will call on the work group to complete this, its work prior to the end of the calendar year. Thank you for communicating Resolution R-0511 to me and for your formal recognition of the close bonds between Ohio University and the city of Athens. Thank you. Mayor Wile, any comments on that?
Again, the part of the memorandum of understanding we discussed, I met with him today, of course. We meet monthly. Some of the issues we, what he brought up is the fact that we are very interlinked and we have many things out there that have kind of like come untangled and we have to look back. The concept of the memorandum of understanding, so we have a laundry list of things that have to be discussed in the future. For instance, the lots by Baker Center, working together on OXPO, the easements that are necessary for the OXPO Bridge construction. So there's a whole grab bag of issues that we need to look at. Realize we've worked before with the roundabout in terms of land acquisition and other easements. So I think we're trying to get it all pulled in one place, at least for the time being. The discussion was also that we'd have to update these, this memorandum as other issues arose.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a good thing, I guess, in a sense. And I think you guys probably got the pictures of the chassis for the ladder truck. It's, it's all stainless steel right now. It was emailed to us and I think emailed to council. The ladder truck's in progress and they were just trying to show us where we were with it. Doesn't look like much except for a bunch of metal.
Looks expensive.
But it's in, it's in train and it's happening.
Well, very good. Any other comments or communications? Member Blaisman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to let you know that city council members received a communication from Larry Lawson, and he's a representative of an organization called YouGive.org. And he's working with another AmeriCorps Vista volunteer. They're Athens high schoolers, and what they're looking for are leadership opportunities in the community. So city council will be in contact with him as well as Mayor Wile to see if there might be some other opportunities. But if there are other persons out there in the community working with organizations that you think can help provide some links and leadership opportunities for high school students, this would be an excellent opportunity. And the person's name is Larry Lawson. And his email is Larry@YouGive.org. And it is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization working with AmeriCorps Vista volunteers, which has a really strong reputation throughout the nation.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Yes? Member Butler?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for President Davis and our mayor to continue to work diligently on issues such as this. It's important for us to continue to collaborate on future endeavors. So I think this is terribly exciting news and it's good for the city, good for the community, good for the university.
And a half million dollar commitment at a time that everybody's finances are so strained.
It's 250,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's five years times 50. We'll take it anyway.
Leave it.
I was just doing the finance thing.
Okay. Somebody has a cellphone.
I used to turn off mine. You didn't, you didn't remind me, sorry.
I did remind everybody. You weren't listening. You were over here babbling about it.
Okay.
So there. Next item is reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Okay. In case I missed it, let's see, I think, I thought somebody from Transportation Committee was, we're talking about having a ribbon cutting for the Northwest Bike Spur. I believe we're set for September 19th at noon. This is in conjunction with the bike pedestrian task force, just to make it official. Not that it's going to go too far. We've got it just across the river and then it trails off into 682. We're working on the landscaping right now. It's pretty much, in fact, you'll see in there, there's actually an ordinance, we have the suspend on it. And I believe that's a bookkeeping one more than anything else. Other things, just to remind you that while you're away and languishing, there are things that need to be done. The AP franchise renewal needs to be put together. I believe that should be on your next committee meetings that comes across. I want to let you know that we did get the chip grant award. It's, again, this is the one for housing and assistance through HAPCAP, Athens-Hawking County Community Action does the administration of that. It's for about $522,000 over a two-year period, about 18 months to two-year period. This has to do with housing starts up, I think, at this point it's already started up, I guess. It'll cover, of course, again, the homeowner repair, homeowner rehabilitation, some down payment assistance. Two of the things that are added to the mix this year was rental repair, and that's to targeting actually Metropone Housing Stock in the city. Not so much our stuff, but the Metropone Housing Authority's housing, as it is, housing stock. It also includes, if you remember, we talked about having, donating a lot to Habitat for Humanity on Alexander Street. This also, some of that money goes for Habitat Humanities, either lot acquisition or actually construction. Some of the other things that are going to be coming at you, again, I mentioned the Joint Police Service Advisory Council, that's still rolling out, so you'll hear about that soon enough. The city plan, Apollo is working on the ward maps for the census, according to the High Revised Code. It's, we have 90 days after October to put that together. He's working in conjunction with Ilgard of GIS. So if you want the input or you want to hear about it, he'll do a presentation on it. But right now, it's just in the forming, data crunching part, looking at the census blocks and deciding how much the wards have changed. As far as I know, informally, he's told me that there have not, have not been a lot of changes, but there might be some tweaking along the edges. Just to let you know that there's progress being made on that. It's, has to be done every 10 years, and I know that those of you who have been around long enough to remember that last year, we didn't, the last 10 years, but we did not change much of it, mostly because the data was not easily available. Let's see, other things. 9/11 10-year remembrance is coming up. I believe there's a call for, at 1:00 PM Eastern Daytime, sirens and bells. So just be aware of that. That will be happening. There are other events, too, I believe in Nelsonville, Amvet's in town here, as well as other activities. There's going to be the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District Public Hearing for the Solid Waste Plan. That will be October 26th. That will be at the inn, 6 o'clock at Hawking College, 6:00 PM. Again, this is about solid waste, solid waste activity. I hope it's not me again with the mic on. Let's see. As you probably know that since you're away, there's a lot of things that filed up. I am asking for a suspension of some of the ordinances tonight. I think you probably know some of them. Let's see. We put a bike lane on Mill Street, so be aware, there's new traffic pattern there. It's going to change a little bit. We'll be watching the lights as they change because it will change how the flow goes through that college and Mill Street intersection.
And stop signs on Mill Street?
What?
Stop signs on Mill Street?
Oh, yes, and the stop signs, most important there.
Thank you.
Everybody seems to think that's a good idea and it looks like it'll work out. They're still working on the sidewalks there, there's still restricted parking, so just be aware, there's still traffic to repair. Most of the other street repairs have been done. I'd like to thank the Ohio University Community Assistance for their weekend welcome tents. They had them out on Ox West and they had one at BP Station on Court Street. They went door to door in various neighborhoods they're covering. I think there's 12 of them. If you have any questions about, you know, contact my office on where they are, who they are. This, again, is by the university's help, working to have peer pressure, peer review of what somebody needs to do in their neighborhood. I know they're out there Saturday in 95-degree weather passing out cookies and literature and it's Saturday, almost falling over, at least on the west side because of heat. And again, thanks, I'd like to thank them because they took their whole day to do this.
Aye.
And Sunday as well. Next time, I will ask for an appointment for the city health department, city county health board. I want to talk a little bit to the gentleman who's applying, a Robert Frye. He used to own, I guess, the, he's retired from the Athens Medical Laboratory. It requires a, he's, we're replacing Marge Nelson, she's stepping down from the health board. Dr. Gaskill recommended this gentleman. I want to, I know a little bit about him. I know he's a radiologist by trade and I know he's run a medical laboratory for many years. But as I say, I don't think I'm ready to appoint, haven't appointed yet, but next, the next regular session, if I'd like to do that, I'll give you a heads up and if I can get more information, I will. And that, I think, covers everything I could think of right now.
Questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you. City auditor Kathy Hecht?
I just want to mention one thing. I brought this up briefly before the recess and I've been sending emails forwarding about the centralization of income tax collection by the state. And I hope to have a resolution ready for committee next week, and if anybody has any questions, please call me. I was kind of hoping it was in the talking phase, but it looks like they want to move forward with this. I was hoping it would die, but not. It would not be a good thing for the city, in my opinion, and we can talk more next week, but I just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Questions, comments for the auditor? City law director Patrick Lehman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to welcome the members of council back from August recess. Hope everyone had a good break. I do have a couple of issues I'd like to touch on this evening, the first being, and I was actually speaking with Member Butler prior to tonight's meeting about this issue, and I've spoken to a couple of other members as well. And that's an issue that's been getting more and more publicity lately, the issue of fracking, or short for hydraulic fracturing, which is a device which is used or a process which is used in the extraction of natural gas. And I know that several members of council have expressed some interest in looking into what are the options that the city may have to be able to, to regulate this practice and to do so in a way that is in accordance with the laws of our state. And so that's something that I'm looking into right now. And I think any, you know, fair-minded person would have to acknowledge that if there's been any single issue in which this council and this mayor have been consistent, it has been their steadfastness in trying to protect our public drinking water in this city. And so to the extent that, that I can be a help in that effort, I'm very pleased to be able to do so. The other issue I have is just one dealing directly with a lawsuit which was filed against the city, actually just before the break. It's a taxpayers' lawsuit, which means that we're being sued by a small handful of taxpayers in the city in the name of the city itself. They're being represented by our former law director, Gary Hunter. And the only real news that we've had in this suit to date is that they had requested the court to file an injunction preventing the construction of a facility on Graham Drive over on the east side. And the court denied their request for this injunction. And in so doing, one of the things that the court actually cited was one of the standards that the person who's seeking injunctive relief has to meet is to demonstrate that they have a likelihood of success on the merits of the case. And the court noted that, that they had failed to demonstrate a likelihood of success, and that's certainly, you know, in line with the city's view of this case as well. So that's, I'll let that for you.
Mr. President? Other questions, comments for the law director? We move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8511 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 29th and 30th, 2011, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens. What could we be talking about but Halloween? Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, the following four ordinances are put in place to ensure safety within the community, and they've been worked on through the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee over the years. The mayor's office, police department have had input on this. This particular ordinance is quite simply looking at a ban on parking on Court Street and closing it to vehicular traffic, and then as well, employing necessary uniformed police officers or members of the police department to preserve peace and public order. Thank you.
Comments? Ordinance 8611 is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 29th and 30th, 2011. Again, Member Butler?
Thank you again, Mr. President. This particular ordinance is looking at keeping safety a priority with a glass-free drinking zone uptown, obviously. And then there is a penalty, so be aware, community members, people uptown that weekend. A penalty for violation of this particular fine, this particular ordinance would be a $50 fine for each violation. Thank you.
Other comments? Ordinance 8711 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in the designated area on October 29th and 30th, 2011. Again, Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance, this particular ordinance is looking at suspension of vending, peddling, and soliciting a number of uptown streets. Those parties interested, please see the code department, the code office for interest in this. As well as, it's important to note here that there's no registration fee required for charitable organizations, civic groups, and nonprofit organizations.
Other comments? Ordinance 8811 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 1304.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area, again on October 29th and 30th, 2011. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lastly, this particular ordinance is quite simply looking at suspension of noise, unnecessary noise, in the uptown region for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Other comments? Ordinance 8911 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Tuesday, October 25th, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM for trick or treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Businesses Association. Member Neisley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance, as described in the title, will close portions of Court Street on October 25th, and it will be from, Court Street will be closed from Union to Carpenter. And we'll ban the parking on the street from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM for that activity. And then also, we allow free parking in the parking garage. And this always has a wide community turnout with lots of kids and families, and it's a really nice time, and we are really happy that the Athens Uptown Business Association is continuing to sponsor this.
Truly grown into quite an event. Mayor Wile?
I would point out that because we do close down Court Street at this time, getting to the parking garage in a timely manner is always something you want to think about if you're going to bring your kids up. And again, this is just instituted in the past couple of years because the number of children who are on Court Street, we decided to close it down for safety reasons. It's a good turnout and it seems to be a fun time. Dress up and have fun with the little kids.
Very good. Other comments? Ordinance 9011 is an ordinance amending ordinance 07611, replacement of the Woodward, Fairview, and a portion of the Island Water Line, and declaring an emergency. Kimber Bane?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 9011.
Second.
The reason for suspension is that we already have the repairing operation, we need additional dollars. And so as you can see, approximately $40,000 additional dollars to go into the project.
Other comments on suspension? All in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Remove adoption of 9011.
Second.
9011 increases the amount, as I said earlier, the reason for suspension is that we're already in process, and the reason for the ordinance is that we need $40,000 additional dollars into the fund. Some of you may have read them and the minutes, and you know that, that they would be delighted to have it finished sooner rather than later up on the hill. But that's what we're doing with this.
Other comments? Mayor Wile?
Part of the increased cost, again, is the age of the piping system and the placement of it. As they've been going through, I've been told that they find surprises all the time of hidden utilities, lost utilities, et cetera, because it's, I believe they say it's about 70-year-old piping up there. So I see Alahu's nodding because he's probably right in the middle of it right now. And it's, it's, it's pretty restrictive where we can, you know, we're doing it, and it's quite a bit of work right now. If you've gone up there, you can see where they've been by the patches and where they have stuff to go. We're putting, I think, believe, an eight-inch line there, so we're actually upgrading it a little bit.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 90?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 9111 is an ordinance amending ordinance 8011, authorizing construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation Project Number 261, and declaring an emergency. Member Bane?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to consider 9111 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
I wish Chris were talking on this. We have, we have, that's what happens when you don't go anywhere. The, this, the suspension is necessary because we're coming up against the deadline for construction, and that's basically why this is being done. And we'd have to wait until next year if we didn't get moving on it.
Other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended on ordinance.
Remove adoption of 9111.
Second.
And we can see that our project has increased, it's up to $240,000. Some part of this money will be removed, will be credited back to us when we do the, what I've always called the Richland Avenue Bridge, the one that goes over the Hawking by the, the Hawking Scar.
That's right.
Yeah, you can call it what you want to. But it was the old, the old bridge, and this, but this one, more to the point, is a Carriage Hill Bridge. We've seen multiple permutations of this, we try, and I think that's one reason for the delay. First, we're going to do it this way, then we're going to do it that way, so now, we've got to do it, and that's what is going on. Chris, do you want to say something about this?
I just wanted to add, you already cited the one reason. It's part of our credit that will be used for our cost sharing for the OXPO construction later, so that's why it's important to get it completed now, so we're doing all of this in a timely fashion. The other thing is the age of the Carriage Hill Bridge, and that this one has been, or the, and the condition, the overall condition of it, that it's been noted by the Ohio Department of Transportation that it is in need of repair.
It's much younger than the one that they're going to replace or do some work on up on the hill, though. It's closer to the water, which is part of the problem, I think, right? I mean, so it's, it's not 100 years old at all.
No, no, not by any means. And the OXPO Bridge, yes, 1932, and this one is younger, but the condition is bad.
Okay.
Mayor Wile?
As, part of it is why the bridge deteriorates quicker, quicker rates, because it does get flooded over. As you know, that is a flood plain area, flash flood area. We put this out the bid twice, and each time it came in higher than our estimates. Originally, we were trying to scope it down to one-day replacement, and then we've opened up to about two weeks now. I think we're trying to make it more amenable to the contractors, and not a lot of contractors have showed up to the bidding. And I say that because really only one has. I guess that they, it's either too much work or too small a work, I'm not sure which it is. So we've, we're trying to get this done by the, the end of the year so we can take the credit of this, of this cost to the OXPO next year.
My understanding, it was timing?
Yes, timing is.
That timing is the major thing that was.
We're also, yeah, we're running against the, yeah, we're running against the, again, this is going to happen in September, if we take another two or three weeks and if we have, we'll have, try to keep one lane open for the duration. But at the same time, if we have weather issues and, as well as just scheduling issues for asphalt, et cetera, it shouldn't take us past the hot mix time, but we want to get this over and done with and actually submit the, the amount of financing for the OXPO Bridge, which is the other timeline right there, which is what Nancy mentions.
Are there any further comments on adoption of ordinance 91? All in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 9211 is an ordinance amending ordinance 6911, authorizing construction of Phase 1 of the Northwest Bike Path Extension from the west, from the West State Park and across the Hawking River, Project Number 255, and declaring an emergency. Member Bane?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 9211. 9211 is a project of, that involves the Recreation Department and the Street Rehabilitation Fund, and as we can see, we've, we're going to up, I think we're going to up the amount a little bit, and we're actually going to have a ribbon cutting, so that's the reason for the suspension. Pardon me for, I was up doing everything but the suspension. The suspension because we're almost done with it, right?
Okay. Other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9211?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Remove adoption of 9211.
Second.
9211 is yet another connection in our bike path effort. The Post reporter was asking, one of the things that I thought was good that had happened as I was on council, and I have to say, the bike paths would be in this category. I believe Chris probably could talk about this more than I, but we've all walked across this bridge, haven't we? We're, that whole area, and it's very nice what's happened there, and it's an additional connection, Moonville Tunnel, here it comes, and other possibilities once it's over the Hawking River. So it's a pretty good deal. Chris, did you have anything to say?
Just that it does significantly, as you've mentioned, significantly expands our recreation area by crossing the river. Used by, I know the bike paths used by a lot of people, not only people in Athens, but people travel around, from around the state and even other states to come here, and so it's an important link. It's also part of what we call for in the pedestrian and bicycle plan, and also our city comprehensive plan, to make different modes of transportation available in the city. And this is part of doing that, too.
Further comments on adoption? Yes, mayor?
And again, this is a work in progress. It's not entirely done. You can ride across it, but I would recommend a mountain bike if you're going to do it, at least till you get to the other side, outside the city limits. And again, this part of it is the shifting of money here is to represent all the total costs, which, part of this is the engineering costs we're trying to put together. costs, which, part of this is the engineering costs we're trying to put together. One of the issues is making sure the projects reflect the amount of money in the dollar amount. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes. Any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 92-11?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 93-11 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period of January 1, 011, through December 31, 011, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
I'm not going to suspend. The Public Defender's contract is currently run in two parts, and we annually have to go into the contract mode, which is what this is going to be, $126,000, $120. We support the municipal court as an obligation under the Ohio Revised Code, consequently, we have an obligation to support the Public Defender's Office, and that's what this is doing. We'll split it in two, half this year, half next, and then in June, it'll start over again, I guess. Isn't that the way it goes, something like that? Anyway, nobody else is mentioning it here. No?
The contract is for the whole year, but we always get it, you know, halfway into the year. It goes from January through December.
January through December? Well, I stand corrected.
Well, again, what you're saying is that they're fiscal, they use a fiscal year, so it comes in six months.
Yeah.
And we do the year, so that's why we always get this.
So if I will have three different stories on this.
No, no, okay, listen, we've got a contract that will take us for the calendar year, but the, what we're dealing with is running on a fiscal calendar for the most part. Now, the last letter they said is that they're going to change it to a calendar year, but I'll see it when I believe it, I believe when I see it.
It's always been like this since I've been in office.
We appropriated about $130 for the year on this, so really, this is us authorization, but also they're granting to the agreement.
The costs haven't changed tremendously over the years, and so we know it's coming, and we estimate the money and pay the bills in the meantime, and this just makes contract profiles.
Other comments?
Other than to say that I can remember when our share was about $50,000.
Oh, I do, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, it has really, I mean, there are some.
It's changed appreciably.
Yeah.
Do you want to have that discussion about whether we should borrow one of their own?
No, but I think that we should have a discussion about what happens when we lose 10% of our general fund, and they probably need to have some cutbacks, too, maybe.
I think about eight years in a row Howard Stevens, and I used to rant on that discussion, if you'll remember.
So.
Yeah.
And it never got anywhere either, so I.
But it's just that we're all going to be strapped.
Yeah.
Thank you, state legislature.
Any other comments? Ordinance 94-11 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $1.5 million of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of improvements to this municipality's wastewater treatment plant, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I move to suspend the rules on 94-11.
Second.
Said bond shall be dated approximately August 1, 2012. It's deceptive, we have, we're going to be using this to fund our design part of it, and so we're, we're coming up against a time constraint here, just like everything before this that we've suspended on. This is another one.
Any other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 94?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Move adoption of 94-11.
Is there any before the other?
Second? Second? Okay.
You have multiple seconds.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad, I've got a lot of backup here. 94-11, they're behind me, way behind me. $500,000 for design engineering for the wastewater treatment plant updates that we have talked about quite a bit over the last six months, and that's what's going on here. We're going to be borrowing the money from Hawking Valley Bank, and you can see that is in the body of this. It may be rolled in, depends what happens, may be rolled into the larger borrowing, or it may be paid off. It depends on the situation that you find yourself in next year at this time.
Any other comments on ordinance 94? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 94-11 has been adopted. Ordinance 95-11 is an ordinance amending ordinance 121-10, authorized staffing levels, Exhibit A's, general fund, police department, and declaring an emergency. Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for the suspension is that a sixth lieutenant is needed in the police department now, and the reason that one is needed is because one of the lieutenants is serving in the National Guard and is gone, and so this is just a temporary addition to the staffing ordinance. It will only be until October 1, 2012.
Other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 95?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
I move to consider this ordinance, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
As I just said, it's necessary that we have a sixth lieutenant in the police department immediately, and as one is gone, serving in the National Guard, and it is a temporary addition to the staffing ordinance until October 1, 2012.
Other comments? Member Bain.
We did this once before and didn't nail it down as well. I hope we have it nailed down to the point where we don't have another, an additional lieutenant after 12, 2012. The other thing I was concerned about when we had meetings is that we will not be hiring an additional patrol officer, will we, to take the place of?
I don't think so, no.
You know, there's not a good, because you have 18 as your staffing level, you're moving one officer up to a lieutenant, and therefore, it looks like we are authorizing an additional officer, and that's not our intent at this point in time.
It wouldn't work if we did, but we are expecting a couple of retirements happening, so.
Okay, well, I mean, I just want to make sure that it's, I'm sure Debbie will put it in a minute for me.
Okay.
It's our understanding that certainly replacing retirements is not the same, but not an additional officer until you know exactly what the financial situation is.
I understand.
Auditor Heck.
I was just going to add that probably everybody knows this, but we are required by law to hold that position open for our officer who is serving in the military, and that's why we just have to add one and keep his position open if he wants it when he gets back.
Any other comments on the adoption of ordinance 95? All in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 95 has been adopted. Ordinance 96 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance. Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is that there are various things in this ordinance, and they're urgent, they just need to be taken care of now. In Section 1 of the ordinance, there are three appropriations from the unappropriated balance. The first one is $20,000 for the roof replacement of the law administration building. It's my understanding that that's been leaking and causing damage. The second one is $16,000 for camera upgrades in the parking garage. This is another thing that needs to be done. Also, it's my understanding that it will cost a lot less in, they will cost a lot less in electric. Is that?
Yeah, it's a more energy-efficient kind of system.
More energy-efficient. And the third one is $5,600 to purchase a refurbished handheld sensor unit for the Athens Hawking Recycling Center. Section 2 of the ordinance, they're actually decreasing appropriations. The first one is the Small Cities Grant, that would be decreased by $460,000 to $2,000. This would reflect the final amounts processed for ODOT payments regarding the roundabout. The second one is the revolving loan fund, that would be decreased by $500,000 to reflect the final decision not to use the CBDG funds. But the reason for the suspension is that.
All of those things.
All those things, they need to be taken care of.
Further discussion on suspension only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended. And for all those reasons, I bet you'd like to adopt.
Yes, I would. I would, I move to adopt.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 96-11?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 97-11 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application for the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Fire Act grant, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, surprise, surprise, I move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is the deadline for applying for this grant is this week. This is a FEMA grant, of course, for the fire department. This would include, this grant would include equipment for a complete Marx radio system, a statewide system that would allow interoperability with other responding agencies. It would be a grant for $180,000, requiring a local 10% match. Did you need to add anything to that?
No, I, what you're saying is a lot of the highway patrol and a lot of the other state agencies have switched this radio system. We will still have our other system as a backup or as a redundancy, but the fact is we want to be able to, I've told them a better radio system, and the idea is we'll be able to talk one-to-one with other services. Example, that is during the festivals last, last spring, of course, is that we had highway patrol down there, so they had their, they actually had to get in line and retune their radios to, they ever talk to us, and vice versa.
Are there other comments on suspension?
Oh, that's the suspension.
Yeah, that's the suspension.
Sorry.
Well, we're taking care of both at the same time tonight. There's so many. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 97?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 97-11 for the reasons previously stated.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 97-11?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We move on to announcements and other business, and I've just got a comment about a nice baby. We knew she was beautiful when you sent us all photographs shortly after the birth, but boy, she's been awfully.
She's a good child.
Oh, well. I hope the camera has got to show everybody what a beautiful baby we have had in here tonight. Surely somebody can get us a photo of that. Okay. All right, I love him. But please tell it was.
And I swear, Emma.
Thanks, Ellen.
There you go, Tina.
Are there other announcements or other business? Allah, Member Gosman.
I'd like to ask for a committee meeting next week. Sure. AP franchise agreement, and possibly one or two other items.
Okay.
It's hard to believe that there's anything left on the planning.
In the world.
Finance and personnel, but he may well.
Yeah.
We may be asking.
That's all we're going to do. There's going to be no money, and they split meeting. Okay, I think we have just about everybody. Kent, did you need one?
Yeah, we'll get another, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll have those. Any other announcements or other business? And the last item is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Seem no one wishing to speak before their council tonight? We stand adjourned.